All right, 6:02, but we made it. And I will call the meeting to order. Clerk may have a roll call and an establishment of a quorum. Isaiah Crowe, Merida Shaw.
Here.
Barb Stotts.
Here.
Mike Meidner.
Here.
Matt Crowe. Dylan Halmstein.
Here.
And I'm here as well. Okay, I approve of posting, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Mary Dunn, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. No public input tonight, I believe. Sure. You're down. Great, thank you. Sure. Excellent.
Oh, there's one.
I just signed in.
Oh!
What have you got? We're doing great.
I typed it in, we'll be good.
I'm just submitting the bottom line.
I love that. All right then, moving on to minutes in payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of May 12th, 2025?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on those? Mary Dunn, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the presentation of strategic plan minutes of May 20th, 2025?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Mary Dunn, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Woo! Oh no.
Uh oh.
Okay. Did you see that? No, that was weird. All right, we have a challenge. Scott, here. Yeah, yeah. All right, 2:3.3. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements listed below?
So moved.
I'll second. All right, you guys have all three. Any questions on those from June? All right, Mary Dunn, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Moving on to reports. I just want to give a big shout out and thanks to our wonderful staff and administration for closing up a successful year and to our admin team, largely new this year. What an accomplishment and thank you all so much for everything. And also, special time I get to give Out of Vanguard Spotlight Award. And so, bittersweet tonight. Okay, Miss Cora Gulligson. So I'm sorry we make people join us in front of the camera.
Right now?
Yes. Gotta get a camera. All right. And we do have some special guests here tonight who nominated you and would like to speak to you.
Paul, it's your guess. You got this. Our choice. He wanted it to be a surprise.
Yes. Hi guys! Nothing like a walk-in. All right, so I introduced Mrs. Gulligson and tell her that she was nominated for Vanguard Spotlight Award. And just to let everybody know, we started this award noting that we could use this public forum for our board meetings to recognize our exceptional staff members. And so because of your nomination, we're here tonight. And I understand you want to share a few things about Mrs. Gulligson, right? Okay, whenever you're ready.
My family thinks Mrs. Gulligson is very deserving, deserving of the Vanguard Spotlight Award. Mrs. Gulligson is my favorite teacher. When it was the first day of school, I was very shy, but soon she showed me love by giving me hugs every day. One time we had a test and I did not understand the question. I raised my hand, Mrs. Gulligson came over and explained the question very well, so I finished the test. Then one day, we had course of practice and had to finish letter A. It was our first time, so our class was nervous, but Mrs. Gulligson had so much faith in us. If you have Mrs. Gulligson, you're gonna have so much fun. This is why I think Mrs. Gulligson is the best teacher in the world.
Mrs. Gulligson was my first teacher at Wisconsin Heights. I was very nervous being the new kid, but Mrs. Gulligson made me feel very welcome and helped me make friends. And I wasn't very good at reading, so she gave me extra help in reading. I am so glad I was able to be in Mrs. Gulligson's class.
Mrs. Gulligson first came into my life 30 years ago when I was nine years old. She was a first-year teacher and I was a very shy fourth grader. I didn't enjoy going to school because I wasn't good at it and I didn't have very many friends. But from the moment I stepped into Mrs. Gulligson's classroom, my life completely changed. I didn't have a very positive self-image, but she took me under her wing and loved me and showed me that I have worth and deserve to have friends who treat me with kindness and respect. She showed me how to form healthy friendships with my classmates and with her help, I found a best friend. I started enjoying coming to school because I looked forward to seeing my friend and seeing Mrs. Gulligson every day. As I became more social with my peers, my, Mrs. Gulligson noticed that I struggled in math, so she worked with me and a few of my classmates daily after school to boost our math skills. Normally staying after school with a teacher isn't something kids look forward to doing, but my classmates and I loved it. I remember Mrs. Gulligson would make us popcorn for a snack and we spent a lot of time laughing while also working on math. It was our special time with Mrs. Gulligson. Since my parents were not able to pick me up when I stayed after school, Mrs. Gulligson gave me a ride home every day. As my math skills improved, I started raising my hand and my voice in class and participating because I finally understood math and I had the right answers. Because of Mrs. Gulligson, I went on to become a math teacher like her so I could make a difference in kids' lives like she did for me. And 28 years later, I received the honor of being able to teach with my favorite teacher at the same school and best of all, she would get to teach both of my kids. I'm so thankful to have my own kids loved and taught by someone who had such a special impact shaping my life and who I have become. Mrs. Gulligson may have entered my life as my fourth grade teacher, but she became my teacher for life.
I need another more forum, I'm gonna say I want a picture again. And for her, those of you who don't know, Cora's sadly leaving us and retiring and I know the spotlight is the last thing you wanted, but there you are, so sorry.
We love that.
Yes, and so we are so thankful for all you have given and your dedication, obviously changing the lives of so many. So formally, on behalf of the Wisconsin Heights School Board, we're presenting this certificate to Mrs. Gulligson with immense gratitude and appreciation. The Wisconsin Heights School District recognizes your passion and excellence in inspiring and supporting members of our school community. So you are... Thank you. Awesome. Well done. Good speaking to you guys. All right, and we have another one to give out tonight. And we had to keep it a surprise because we know you wouldn't have shown up for it. So Bev, would you please come up here?
Me into a liar.
So this one's also hard because we're losing Bev. And so, we recognize you for your obvious passion and dedication to the district. And you've made a difference in our lives professionally and personally. And so, to the kids of the district through your mentorship and advising our student council. And so, we have words from some of the students.
Oh, boy.
Are we related here? So I've compiled some words of thanks from Jocelyn, Clara, Claire, Madeline, and Rachel. Bev has always been there for anyone that needed someone to talk to. She feels like family to me. Bev radiates positivity through everything that she is a part of. Her kindness and passion is contagious and she always wants the best for everyone she is around. In student council, she selfishly, selflessly gives her time, energy, creativity, and kindness to projects and events we try to put on. Bev has given the entire middle school, especially me, a sense of empowerment, confidence, and the feeling that our voices are heard and valued. She has been such an inspiration to me, showing me how to love and show complete kindness to everyone around me, look at things in a positive way, be confident in my ideas, take initiative in doing so, and truly wants the best for everyone's success and for the betterment of our school's environment and community. After only a few meetings, I already felt like I had been with this group for so long and part of that was because Bev made me feel so welcome. It's just so easy to see how amazing Bev is as our student council leader. She has influenced the middle school in so many ways and has helped us develop into a better place. She has helped me in ways beyond any explanation and I'm so grateful for that and always will be. She was the one who started middle school, middle school student council and gave students a new sense of belonging and purpose. Bev has made a tremendous impact on the Wisconsin Heights School District. Her caring personality makes her a welcoming presence for staff, students, and visitors to the district. Bev has poured her heart into the middle school student council and leading them in spreading kindness and school spirit throughout the school and community. I personally feel that Bev has been an essential part in making Wisconsin Heights what it is today. And on behalf of the board, Bev. Bev's a rock star, always going above and beyond, gladly accepting any and all professional responsibilities thrown at her, some years more than others. Craig. But most special is her heart of gold. As many have already mentioned, Bev's genuine commitment to ensuring the best for our students and staff has truly impacted our school community for the better. And for that, we're most thankful and we will miss you so very much. So, to repeat, in honor of this award, on behalf of the Wisconsin Heights School Board, we present this certificate to Bev Whalen with immense gratitude and appreciation. Our district recognizes your passion and excellence in inspiring and supporting members of our school community. Thank you, Bev.
That's not fair. I don't want to ever come in this room again.
Sorry I lied to you.
There we go. Yes, and I'll just stand back.
Michelle, do you want to be in it?
Yeah, Michelle, here I can see you.
Yeah. Sure.
Say wrong.
Hold your...
Good sir. It's very, very sneaky. Very sneaky.
Yep.
Can we go this way through?
Awesome. Now, now, now you... All right. Thanks. Hey, thanks so much. We don't normally cry at our school break. There you go. So we won't make you stay if, you know... Go while you can. Yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving on.
What a good meeting.
Business.
Call to a jerk.
I know. All right. So we do have some faces here tonight to give reports. Do you want to fight for who goes first or...
I want to see him come up and do rock, paper, scissors.
Scott's up. What a guy. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, so I got some updates for, we've been doing for IT stuff recently. So we've been, we've been moving some services to the cloud recently. So one thing we moved recently was Destiny, the library system, moved that to the cloud. Says that'll be hosted by Thought directly. We are working on converting from Skyward Student System to Infinite Campus. We're working now on getting the data exported from Skyward and then we send to, to get that converted over. We are also going to then convert the Skyward Finance System to the cloud. So that'll be hosted by IS Corp, which is kind of what Skyward uses for hosting in the cloud basically.
I'm sure that's seamless too right now.
Because it's just taking our database and getting to them and they can do it from there. You have a little more actually, sort of, size data.
Not gonna perfectly fit.
Yeah. We've also been, for like high school, maybe bought 25 devices, laptops and docs for high school classrooms. So we had, we had a bunch of leased laptops that we purchased about four years ago. We had given those to teachers and then those had high school devices. All the high school students had a Windows laptop. And those were all on lease. So we're, that's, that's ending now July-ish, so we're going to get those sent back to Dell. We're gonna, we're buying out a portion of the staff laptops to keep because they're still, you know, good laptops. The student ones are all gonna go back, they'll all be up after, they're all gonna go back. And then, we're gonna be changing from having Windows devices for high school, just having Chromebooks across the board for, you know, like first grade up. Kindergarten, they have iPads, where she bought new iPads this year and we'll be getting them deployed this summer. Right into kind of a roadblock with the power outlets because they, Apple, Apple changed their way to fit, so it wouldn't fit into me the, yeah, that's been working. So yeah, buying, buying all new Chromebooks for high school students. We're gonna be, I think, I believe doing it for fifth grade as well and then the fifth grade ones will kind of move up through middle school. So we'll buy, we'll see a set of Chromebooks for fifth grade every year and then it'll just kind of like follow up. We're gonna be buying 24 more laptops and docs for middle school classrooms. We also have replacement outdoor PA speakers for middle school and high school, both just newer ones and additional ones, just kind of fill in some smaller spaces there. There was some, like at the front building, there was only like one speaker for the whole front edge, not enough, so we can have at least like two there, just newer ones that are of our...
Sometimes it was baffled enough and everybody, I can't tell, is that nice?
They're pretty old speakers, so they've seen a lot of use, so.
Good deal.
And also the CAD lab at high school, we're getting, getting new machines for there, which are also like relatively old machines, so we're gonna upgrade those with newer, newer hardware. That's all I got here.
Scott wants a wiring for the doors, exactly?
Oh yeah, so that, they've, they've been doing the, they've pulled the wire for the doors right now. That's complex security, pulling that. I think they maybe started as well looking at elementary because we were basically gonna replace the door sensors on there, just because some of those weren't working correctly. So they're gonna, so they're doing that as well. Child's controls has the closure installed for the door controller in the high school. Just because of the quantity we were adding, we needed to have, I don't know, pretty additional panels, so we're excited to put that into the high school. Just a lot of them are, there's, there's way more doors in the high school. So they need to have sensors in some of the door, you know, door are closed. So we're pulling to that new, that new panel. And then, like recently, we had added locks, electric locks on gyms here. Still working out a kink with the ones in the elementary. That's, that's basically, we didn't find the power supply of some sort to find a power to those, but we'll take, we'll get that taken care of and... And yeah, then I think they, they have, have a security, we also will be involved once we start doing the entrance as well, they need to do the wiring for that stuff too. That'd be a new video intercom that'll be put into place to replace the existing, like A phone that we had since 2013. So that'll, it'll be a new one.
Yeah, a lot of updates. And then a lot of those new devices was, remind me, the... Dependable switches. Yeah, yeah, which has been outlined and put in the budget.
Yeah. I believe as well, they have like new smart boards on the budget, have a couple of them directly, a bad quiet shed.
First thing first. Awesome. Sounds like you're busy. Any questions for Scott? All right, thanks so much for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Bill? Nothing going on in your world either?
Project wise, we've got gym floors, which will start next Tuesday in the elementary school. So that gym space will be shut down through the 25th, or till the 25th. And then, middle school, high school, south and north gyms will be done June 25th through July 6th. So they'll come in, screen them, and I put two coats of water-based polyurethane on them and then after they do that, then we've got to go through and clean all the dust up on that as well and they'll be ready to use. Outdoor wise, we got Vanguard Electric, we had them find the poles. We've got 14 fixtures, or 14 different fixtures out on poles on the stadium lighting. So they went up and got me a replacement booker of wall and to get the information off of it. So I'm in the process of ordering 15 of them and we've got two fixtures with broken glass, so we're trying to come up with glass enclosures for that. Scoreboard, everybody's been talking about the digit flash.
No, they haven't.
The digit has been replaced, we replaced that, but it still did the same thing, so. I've been in contact with them, I've got to go out, remove two digits to see if it's a short or a bad connection. And if that doesn't solve it, then I'll send out an electrician to look at the wiring schematic completely. And with the new front canopy and such going in, one of the things that I had a quote from Olson Toomey, to maybe in front of the district office, rip out that eyesore of landscaping there with a bunch of grass growing on it, to replace that. And so, that, the quote is roughly $5,000 to do that. So it's something we should think about this summer if we're looking at having middle school in August there of some sort. And we'll top off the mulch out there at some point this summer. And then plumbing wise, we've got a leak between two block walls in the high school bathrooms down here. So water was running out underneath the wall into the hallway, so we had to shove the cold water out. So basically, I bring it in, Mason, he's gonna tear the wall down, we're gonna put pet plumbing in it versus cower and then we'll build the wall back up. So hopefully we don't have any issues like that. We're gonna replace all cold in and out water while we get the wall down. And then, so, we do have to move a section of lockers as well to get the last...
How old is that plumbing work?
That's probably original, so 64-ish, so. It's just a pinhole leak, it's nothing but, it's not watered out. I have on, had on here, install a hand sink in the hall card room, which I guess is not gonna occur anymore because of another thing that we're putting in that space, which we'll discuss in a bit, a little bit. We've got another ball valve leaking over at the elementary school, that's an effective ball valve, we've had, this will be our third that we've replaced over there. We've got an exterior wall hydrant that is leaking out over there as well, so that'll be taken care of. High school shower locker room, we're looking at, that council may rep them. Some students do use them, so we're looking at trying to repair that stuff if they can find a repair parts for it. And then, we're gonna install auto flush valves and faucets in the middle school and areas that don't have them throughout the summer. We may not get them all complete, but...
Bill, where did that idea come from?
Where did that idea come from? That came from Bev and the...
Stu Castle.
So I put two in, immense from over here on the toilets. And one of the issues that we had is obviously not flushing after use, so they work well, so as long as they... HVAC, we're replacing the chillers, system pump number two, which was installed in 2020 or 1920. Remodel, that's, I'm gonna take that, we're putting a new pump in, I'm gonna take the old pump, I will rebuild, so we've got a backup. So that'll be done by ASAP. Flooring classrooms, we're starting that this coming Wednesday as far as removal. So there's 12 classrooms, middle school lounge and the trainer room will be part of the summer's project, so. And the flooring would be the gray, lighter gray flooring that we've been putting in the classrooms. This is obsolete and gray, every used in the hallways is obsolete, but the classroom stuff is still there, so. Middle school secure entry project, PSI, their start date is the 23rd of June to start doing demolition and we'll be putting up disc lane and stuff like that to hopefully clean the dust areas. And then Luger will be building two spaces within the middle school current office area for offices and that, so. La Forest has got some door security stuff that they're gonna do for us, which was approved by the board a while back and that, that will be until July with the baggage of stuff. Generator, obviously, the other one was at its end of useful life. So then we contracted with Nichols Electric Construction to put a new generator in. Right now we are without one and we'll be without one until late August. So if we have power, there's no backup system on this building here, there is at the elementary school. We're gonna go to 150 KW system, which is twice the size of what we currently have. And we've been putting a lot of kitchen equipment, coolers, freezers, and that on it, which aren't currently on that. So the goal on that is the end of August. Location, if you want your input or want to give me your input, I'm okay with that. So we were gonna put it out towards the shed out back where the, the wellhouse is. We're gonna put it in that area or we can put it fairly close to the school. It's gonna be less expensive if we put it at the school, they wouldn't have to trench gas or two underneath the driveway there or the road there. So I'm okay with the other place, it doesn't run a ton. It's gonna be about half the size of what the elementary school unit is. So that's a 300 KW, this one would be 150 KW. So if you have any input on where you want it to go, we haven't decided on that yet, but it will be something that we'll do this, probably in the next month. Kitchen freezer, we have a leak in the coil inside the unit, so it's the evaporator coil, so, and that's non-repairable, so we're, we have to replace that. So one of the things that Sandra and the food services had, had mentioned that she's in need of more freezer space. So there's a couple options we have. The first option is we, we have a current existing cooler freezer in the dry storage area and that's the freezer that's got the bad coil. So we can take and make that entire space freezer space and we would block off the door to the cooler. They would fall and put stainless steel panels over top of it. They would fall and put stainless steel panels over top of it and then just put a larger evaporator coil in it. So we do that and then we would build a cooler outside of that current space. And it would be an eight by 10 cooler. So that'd be something similar to what we put in our at the elementary school last year in that kitchen space. I'm not 100% certain and they won't guarantee me that there won't be any air leaks around that door. But so that's why I'm skeptical about that. So the other option is if we don't know that route is to repair the existing freezer with a new coil, evaporator coil, the condensing unit. And then build a separate freezer within the a la carte room. So because that's kind of wasted space, I measured, I've got it laid out in there right now. It's an eight by 10 with a ramp into it because you've got to have a four inch floor on it. Versus a cooler, you can actually use the existing floor. You just have the three walls or four walls. Sandra's okay with any option. So that's, it's a $40,000 option, 40 to 50,000 depending on which scope we go with.
Can't they just triple seal it? Double, triple like. Keep sealing until you're like sealed.
The inside, you'll have access to, but if we go to cooler outside of that, you wouldn't have access to it. So I mean, you can pull the panels off that they're going to put up and you can probably, you know, look to see if. Our suggestion is to, there's only a small gap, you seal it with foam. And then just put the panels over top of it because the door and everything's got foam inside already. So that's, that and then putting a brand new cooler outside of it, you're looking at, you know, a little more money for that. Because they've got to basically, they'll take the wall out in between the cooler freezer, cut that off. Put the new evaporator in and then cover that door. So there's a little more work, labor in it. So that's why that one is a little more expensive. So again, this is something that we need to make a decision on soon because we'd like to get the evaporator in this year if we can do it. And the company we're looking at doing is heating refrigeration. They do our PM here. And then the new freezer or new cooler, I should say, would be part of the 25, 26 budget.
I'd hate to take up space in the a la carte room in case future needs.
Same way, yeah. And that's the thing is everybody's got their own opinion on what that room's going to be used for. Sandra said next year it'll be used for cold food somewhere. So you would still have that space in front. There'd be about 10 feet between the gate grate that we put in and the cooler wall. You could still serve out of that. But any hot food type stuff, then she said that's going to transfer into the actual kitchen serving line next year. So she doesn't even know if there'll be a use in that a la carte room next year. So that's the thing, but that's one person, you know, if she's not here in two years, how do you know what that person's saying? So you're, you know, it's going to be a permanent thing if we do it. That's the one thing.
Do you want us to decide now?
Well, it's a few, but I mean, I don't doubt that we can seal that existing door. But in three years down the road, we got to leave and so, you know, he told us to do this, you know. So I want, I don't want to make that decision on my own. So.
I don't like the idea of sealing it.
So those are both walk-ins?
They're both walk-ins. So right now we've got a freezer door and a cooler door and they're separated by a wall. So they would seal off the cooler, cut the wall over the center and it becomes one large freezer with one evaporator. If that freezer goes down, then you're scrambling to find an evaporator, you'll have to run a truck. Whereas if you have two separate freezers, you've got. And there is another cooler freezer within the kitchen itself, but it's not large enough for the food and that. Because they're going to extra options, I think, is what I, my understanding is.
Could we maybe after this take a field trip to the kitchen and look at the space? Would that change anybody's mind?
I mean, I can watch it through the scenario, but I have to fall over and.
So you're still talking about repairing the other freezer?
Even in the trouble of. Well, the repair would be a brand new evaporator coil, so that's, that would be the plus. If we stayed with the existing and then built a separate freezer, then they're both basically brand new, other than the box.
And it's taped off.
I got taped off, so.
So I could take them after work.
Okay, so as you go into the dry storage area, that's where the cooler freezer is. There's blue tape and white tape. So one of the other options we looked at was buddy three walls up to the existing freezer. But then again, you've got a potential leak situation. So I don't like that option at all. So the white tape on the floor was, as you'll see, is a new freezer buttered up to the existing freezer. There's blue tape kind of overlaying and that's where the new cooler we go. And then in the a la carte room, I've got a layout with tape that where that would sit. Then we're the three options.
Okay, okay. Do our best. Field trip.
And the only other option, you can put something outside, but you've got to travel so much further to get it. LMC furniture replacement, basically EBI is warrantying. We had four high tables that were de-laminating. So they warranted them. The four new ones will be here Thursday. And then we're going to utilize them in different spaces throughout the building. And then we're working, we met today about the new furniture order for the office space and other furniture that we need to order. And then crack filling, which is, we've seen some separation in the crack filling that occurred last year. So they are coming back this summer to refill the cracks underwater. And then that should be about it. Oh, hand washing thing. So if we go, apparently the state, if we touch food in that a la carte room, you have to have a hand washing thing. So but if they move that hot side stuff into the kitchen, then we've already got a hand sink there. We wouldn't need that. So I think I'm going to bypass that hand sink until we absolutely need it because that could be, we got to go through the wall, find the plumbing, all of that stuff. So that could be $2,000, $3,000 cost. But she didn't see a need for it if we just have the kids eat their own bagels and toast and stuff like that. So that's, that's that.
Any questions for the?
Family, yeah. I don't know, you got a little bit more on that second page.
Well, I got filled up today.
For the courtyard?
Oh, yeah. I didn't put that down.
Nobody asked.
The scope on the courtyard was, I was told that, I think it was two years ago even, that some groups were going to take and they wanted to re kind of purpose that. And that has not transpired and doesn't sound like it's going to. So I guess direction on that, whether you use it. My understanding was they wanted to make some prairie plantings and stuff like that, put benches out there and lawn areas and that. Right now it's a grass mogul and you break your foot mowing it. So Trump's doing a nice job of keeping that up.
Do you think, I mean, would it be purposeful for students? So has anybody explored just concrete slab, so no maintenance?
No, I haven't done any, no.
Putting some tables out there for use, but like no maintenance wise?
Well, I, yeah, there's, the thing with the prairie grass and that, I talked to Ryan from Olson Toomey. They gave us a quote to put some prairie grass in and that. But he said that's a three to four year kind of process because you have to weed it, you know, maintain it. Who's going to do that? You know, I certainly don't want to do it. I don't mind turning some stuff back, let's go out on a regular basis and pull weeds and stuff like that. I know when we've tried to use it in the past for certain things, that when classes are going on in that, in those spaces, that it distracted them. And they were looking on windows and that, that's the one thing. How much do you use it and when, what times do you use it? You know, if it's during lunch hour, that's one thing, but if that's, is that a $30,000 item you want to stick money into? If that's the case, if it's awesome, because the only way to pump some money in is either bring it in by bugging or order that.
I know some money was donated for that, so do we know what's happened to that?
I have no idea. I wasn't part of that. That's the, those that were involved in the process, I think.
Do you have a take on that, Liz?
I would love to put, like really go to that student advisory board. I mean, we have some really great students with some ideas. Ironically, we were just talking about that on our trip to visit some schools looking for furniture. And then brought back, you know, just some ideas that they saw there too. But I think they would love, I would, one of the things was just like what you said, Bill, was they would love a place like outside for lunch. That they could be and just sit, I mean, there's nowhere they can go. I mean, it's like, you know, these kids. But they also still love, I know Miss Haye has the bird feeder and to watch the birds sometimes. It's just kind of neat to see them too. So they don't want to ruin what is there, but they would like it to be usable and be able to sit through and have some chairs and some, some benches and some tables.
One of the photos that Ryan sent me and I want to say it was some very possibly that they had a cement area, walk paths and that, and then they had astroturf.
Oh, yeah.
So that was some seating options there or you just lay in the, sit around in that, so.
Well, it would also be nice if it was accessible, like when we had tournaments and stuff for like people to go sit out there during when we had tournaments here too. So I mean, it would have been a nice, you know, accessible place for people to go sit while, you know, they're eating or, you know, waiting for other games and stuff to go on. So I mean, it would have been a nice place for, for that too, so.
Well, I think, and that was the hope of maybe getting tables out front.
Yeah, yeah.
Say for the lunch hour and have somebody that.
Now, if you had access for outdoor events and stuff like that, you're opening up a large portion of the school.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying is like it would be kind, would have been nice if it was in a different location, you know. So that was closer to, you know, so you weren't opening up the school to that, you know, because that would have been a great, you know, space for, you know, to use it for that.
I mean, that slab out front in front of the north gym, you know, there's an opportunity there to.
That's what I would love to see is to get some tables out front in front of the, the north gym. Is to see some tables get put out there so that that's a space for kids to be able to go and for families to go when we hold tournaments and whatnot. Because that is such a wasted space. That's just a big concrete slab of nothingness.
That's what they're exploring.
Yeah, it's like, it's like nothingness. It's always been nothingness. Like there's like nothing there.
Are the kids allowed to go outside for lunch or not?
I don't. No, you're perfectly right. I said that we, so this year we, the bag chairs were there for them, but we never really had the warm weather of the spring to make it consistent. Like they had a day here or a day there and like, we don't want to go get the chairs for you, just sit for you. And we love to sit right outside by the bike pole. We have either the cameras so we can be watching it or we might have an adult stand right there. But if we have that courtyard area, absolutely, I mean, that would be a great space for kids to be able to go. Again, you know, it's, it's nice when our kids have spaces to be because sometimes it just feels good.
Well, and outdoor, everybody needs fresh air.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I would say it's something that we should continue to explore. I think what starts as great intentions, especially anything with maintenance, is like not realizing that somebody can dedicate their time. But what happens when that person leaves or a class that's really invested graduates and nobody, I mean, which is kind of what it's been, right? So maybe we put it on the Fund 46 wishlist too, potentially looking at concrete or turf or something that's low maintenance, has some permanent value. Combined with maybe some kid ideas we can look at and look back. I think Mr. Hopper would know about the donation and checking in with that person and seeing. I believe it was working in connection with an arborist or something that maybe could help with the front if they want to maneuver. You know, I don't know how we could maybe fix and remedy the situation with something donated for a different cause, but.
We can look at that.
Yeah, Brett and I can look at into that, where that donation is. All right. Anything else? Thank you so much, Bill. Maybe lost without you.
Yes, thank you so much.
I could lost my son's loss. So let me know on the idea of the freezers, so I can call them and let them know which direction we want them to.
Is there one that you're leaning towards? The, probably the.
Basically, she wants, she wants, she wants freezer, extra freezer space. So whether we go with the two separate ones, she's okay with that. But it's, again, it's, do you foresee that a la carte space being used in a different way maybe for somebody else too? Because once it's in there, it's in there, you know, you pull it out.
Okay, awesome. Take a look. Thanks so much, you guys. Right, Michelle's got some dates.
Yeah, I'll go through a couple. So celebrations, we just ended the year, the graduations, the eighth grade transition, which was fantastic. Some new hires and kind of celebrating and kind of sad, Jim Smuzzlett, it's his last day tomorrow with us. I know.
On campus, you can call me anytime.
You just said that.
867-53099, ask for Jenny, so come by.
We will miss him.
But no, seriously, Jen, thank you so much. It's been great to have you here. You really gave us some, some great perspective on the position as well and some of the things that we learned to, to make it better. So appreciate you so much. So thank you, yes.
You've got a great school district. You've got some great people and you hired another great person here to take over, so you'll be in good hands. So good for you. You should all be proud of what you've done here.
We agree.
Challenges, we had the loss of one of our staff members, Sherry Erling was passed away just a couple of weeks ago. So that was real hard for the entire staff, like K-12. So thoughts and prayers go, still go out to her and her family and she will be greatly missed by all of us. Priorities, things that are going on. I have now, our, my report is all in line with our strategic plan. So I'm sure the next ones you see from my, my team will be the same way. But for educational excellence, one of the things I want to highlight is we will be having, so I took some bids on from folks for consultants to come in and work with our admin team. And then our, our staff as well as taking that strategic plan and putting together all the goals and strategies and things. So I worked with a consultant that worked with Verona Area School District, who was great, and with Brad and Steve, who did our last one. And Brad and Steve were half the cost and we are, they're just fantastic to work with. So we are going with them and that starts Wednesday. So we're getting, we're going to be working with them Wednesday morning on our staff retreats. We're excited. Love that. Beyond the Bell, we administer the youth perception survey to staff, students and families. And we'll be using some of that data in our retreat on Wednesday. So eventually the board will see that data. For the Vanguard family, we are excited to, we signed a contract with the Wisconsin Heights School Age Program and Watch Us Grow program. So we'll once again have infant to childcare in our elementary school for our staff. So great way for us to retain and attract staff and supportive staff that are currently here, so we're excited for that. We're doing some great hires hopefully tonight, which is exciting for the team, for Vanguard family. Just for all the upgrades and things that we're doing in the building. And I think that's it. I mean, there's lots of other things that you can look at, but.
Any questions?
Yeah, well, so when they do start the construction here, are we still going to be meeting in here and how do we access here?
Great question.
I'm just curious, are they tearing the entrance down and working there? How are we?
Yes, so what we might end up doing actually, that's a great question, is we'll probably move our board meetings to that room. So our high school office is going to move to the high school library. So we'll probably use that room that we've used before for the board and hearings and such. Maybe do that, have our board meetings in there. So.
Just curious.
Yeah, that's a great question. So we'd come in at the high school entrance then.
Are we able to get in with our key card?
Well, yes, we'll be able.
Yeah, they'll be doing a little construction on that. I don't know if that's the first part of the project or not. So I just don't know that timeline, but if not, you can, your key card will work on this far. But area over here by the elementary, you just get to walk all the way around the backside.
What about by the Ms. Howler's room?
Or the White Rose entrance, Mary could do that one.
Yep, Ms. Howler's room, the problem should work there too. If anything, maybe that's just something we can mount. that's just something we can mount.
Or we're just going to walk around aimlessly until we.
Well, I'd say tonight, while we're doing, we could go outside too.
It's an exciting day.
Next Monday, Tuesday to know all the plans, like the dates and all the things, so once we met with them, I, I was going to come up with a plan for you, so, yeah.
Just a shout out for the childcare contract, and that was a big step, so congratulations on that.
Anything else? All right, the rest of the team is going to be presenting, um, some updates on our SIPs and PLCs, and so rather than them giving additional reports, they did supplement, um, some stuff on there, so if there are any questions, you can ask them right now, otherwise we'll move into our next.
I have a hopefully a quick one for Dale.
Jendah, okay.
What's collaborative classroom?
It's just a, it's a reading and research curriculum, it's a program, like, you know, compared to you, you're familiar with I-Colden and FLYD, entirely, so collaborative classroom is, it's, it's one of the companies that we're working with.
Thank you.
All right, if there's something else, then we will move on to our first item of district business, um, which will be a presentation on the end of the year updates for school improvement plans and professional learning, community development. Do you want me to put it on the thing, or are you, does everyone want to?
I have it, but it, it doesn't. What would you guys remember?
Okay, okay. Do you have a slide? Do you have it to read along with?
Your slide, it might help.
Isaiah, do you want me to present it, or are you okay?
Nope, I got it.
Okay. All right, so our SIP goal that the team, so we had a very diverse team with classroom teachers, interventionists, special education teachers, so it was a very dynamic team that carried the work, and I will say that they carried all the work back in August, as I just kind of looked at the data, but I knew that the data meant more to them, because it was their past students and me coming in new. So I kind of let this team kind of develop the plan and really dig into the data, and where they thought they could go with this was to really look at utilizing what instructional practices we can do throughout the school day to meet all student needs. And with that, they decided using targeted support time, so we have thirty minutes of structured time built into our schedule, both for English Language Arts and for math, but the team decided to do a focus around English Language Arts, and they thought that they could use this targeted support time to really focus on all students, really meet the needs. For our 4K friends, it works a little bit different, so they kind of still wanted to see growth, but they don't have that targeted support time, so they really worked on that during their small group time with our 4K friends, so we don't want to forget about those fun guys either. So, the idea is that we wanted to see seventy percent of our students show typical growth with using an assessment that we have, that the district has called iReady, and our 4K students would use the teaching goal assessment. So, with that, some of our plans that we had and the objectives was to, in our professional learning communities, our PLC is to strengthen how we can support students during our targeted support time, look at the data and how can we move forward with those students. We wanted to build staff capacity, so really make sure they understood what they were teaching, year-long professional development aligned to reaching that seventy percent of those students, and then using the PLC process, intervention time, and different practices to help meet the needs of students. We did this, we created that win time, and we also had our PLC time, that teachers had uninterrupted time to meet with their team. All right, so now the data. So our four-year-olds, they, like I said, their data was a little bit different, they focused more on letter recognition and also printing their names, so we can successfully say that students coming out of 4K have shown a hundred percent growth in letter identification and recognizing and printing their names, which is awesome and huge. So it's a great show that our 4K full-day program is definitely helping these students get set up for education success. Kindergarten? So, if you look at the data, their typical growth, so the typical growth is where we want to see students, that stretched growth on the bottom of that right side, is where we are trying to push students so they don't keep falling behind grade level. So we really want to see that typical growth, and our kindergarteners showed ninety-six percent met their annual typical growth. First grade, seventy-four percent met their annual typical growth. Second grade, sixty-four percent met their annual typical growth. Third grade, seventy-four percent. Fourth grade was sixty-three percent. And fifth grade was sixty-two percent. One of the things, when I went back and I looked at this data, I noticed that it was kindergarten, second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, all below that seventy percent. Another thing I went back and I noticed, all of those classes, except for fourth grade, have more than sixty students, so class sizes are sitting at twenty plus. So I thought that was kind of interesting. The other thing with fourth grade, kind of wondering why their data did not meet, is the spring assessment of iReady was given just after the forward, and in fourth grade, not only do they have lots of English Language sessions, but they also math sessions, Erge Wisconsin Forward, but also science, social studies sessions as well. So they just got done taking lots of assessments, and then we threw this on their plate. So I'm looking forward to really digging into the forward scores to see how they align, and I would be more than happy to, once those get out of, um, we can see that data, I would love to kind of compare and share that data with you guys, if they are similar, or, and if we are still seeing that below growth, then what can I do to help support our team in our school to get to that growth? But those were just some of the things, as I love to add the different grade levels, that were below that seventy percent. School-wide data, we, sixty, we were at sixty-seven point one percent did meet their annual growth, and out of that, fifty-five point six of those students in the non-white majority race categories were performing on target. And then for white students, we did have that sixty-eight point nine percent. So, taking that information, again, also I would love to compare it with our forward data and using, because I don't want to just use one piece of data, I really want to try to triangulate and use more than just one piece to set up a game plan, but we see here that we know where we want our targeted students and where we need to meet them at. So with that said, some next steps is really breaking down, so iReady does a great job of breaking down different standards on where to teach, so we really want to look at that with our end of the year data in August, along with the forward and different strands where we are, where we need to meet our students, where are we excelling, but also where can we step it up a notch? Redefine our literacy win time and our intervention time, so that targeted time, what can we do to really help students, all of our students? Strengthen our PLC focus and focus on ELA growth, so one of the things that I heard back from staff members is instead of just professional learning communities within their grade levels, they would like to see it more vertically. So if you have a higher student, what can you do if you're a fourth grade teacher? What can a fifth grade teacher help to provide? Or if that lower student, could you go down to third grade, and what can they do to help provide? So that is something, teachers have that feedback that they will work into our professional learning community schedule for next year. And then we really want to provide more professional development and coaching around those tier two, those tier three supports during that targeted intervention time. With students of disability or economically disadvantaged students, how can we really focus on those students? But also don't forget, I do want to celebrate the success in all of our students, because whether it did show targeted growth, all the students did grow this year, and that's what we do want to celebrate and keep in the back of our mind. Any questions?
So these are showing growth scores?
Yes.
Achievement scores?
Yes.
So it's measuring what a student did the year prior to what they're doing now, or at the beginning of the year to what they're doing.
Their previous, yes, beginning of the year to what they're doing right now.
What does it look like for provide targeted staff support? Because we've just seen this, I feel, more routinely over the last few years of the achievement gap, the growth gap between the economically disadvantaged students and the not students?
So in those targeted support times, teachers have, this year, the SIP team created non-negotiables. So those non-negotiables is that half-hour time is time-focused for all students, no new learning is happening, we're really focusing students on where they are at. And I know myself, I need to help provide more support to those teachers to really make sure they've got the resources and curriculum to help meet students where they're at, and also call in those interventionists, what are they doing? Can we get other materials in there to help support teachers? Can we also move students around to different classrooms? Because right now, all second grade has that win time at the same time, so let's maybe move kids around so teachers can utilize the teacher's strengths to meet the needs of all students. Did that answer? Okay.
Does everybody use consistent modeling of like learning targets and maybe communicating that in the same way?
It could get better, I know, they have slowed and kind of laxed on that a little bit, as I've gone in through this year, some did and some didn't, and I would mention that in my feedback that I had, is, but don't forget to remind students, you know, what the learning is and why they're learning, and that could be better.
And I, I even think from a parent's perspective, is trying to like engage and connect the at-home learning versus, I think a lot of parents would be up for, if there's, you know, on a weekly basis, a targeted goal, and just ask your kiddos and check in on these three things, um, I mean, although even as a middle school parent, I think we're talking about ways that we can engage parents more in the learning process, and I think a lot of people are helpless and just, you know, small check-ins, and they're like, hey, check in with your kiddo, did they learn that this week? Was there a major goal?
Yeah, it's really good to hear.
Consistent, right? Like if everybody's doing it in the same manner, maybe.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Do you think, like you had also strengthened PLC, PLC focus on ELA growth, do you think that's going to remain the topic for the next years to come, just continuing to drill down on?
I think it will, and also too, with us being, next year reviewing new ELA curriculum, I think that is also going to play a huge part, and trying to keep that at focus, so we can keep those kids there, because we know when you do get a new curriculum, there could be some learning loss there, so make sure we are filling in those gaps where needed.
New curriculum also helps, it's actually, we'll spend the year, and the teachers will focus in on, um, what's really important, what do we expect out of our, our ELA, and so I think it will actually help us hone our specific skills at different grade levels and what we're looking for, so I think that'll help us a ton, typically does, tightens everything up.
All right, thank you so much. All right.
All right, so some great news, um, obviously, if you had a chance, and I know this, this one, um, came in a little bit late, tried to use the same background, I think one of the beautiful things between Sarah and I is that we keep it consistent, and it will just, it's a lot easier for the eyes and for understanding. I probably used a couple different graph pieces, just because of some of the testing that we had, but for the most part, I tried to use that same showing of the target growth as well as the stretch growth as well, for, for all our, our students. But we will, um, get to the first two hour school improvement focus, we really, when I walked in, our school's in a really good place, all right? So I walked in today, like, great, I don't want to mess anything up. And we were really lucky with that, and the teachers, really, the SLT, that group of people really just jumped in and said, hey, let's, let's guide this ship, and I'm like, yep, I'll look back, I'm going to just watch for a little while. One of the things that I started to see was that we were, we were moving, we were moving, like our acapella was rolling, we were going, but there were still some things that just weren't, we weren't catching yet, all right? Maybe going on the wrong side of the buoy, I'm not sure, however we were working it, but we had to pause, and in about October, we did pause, and we took two, maybe a more notebook, or I apologize, took a couple steps back and said, hold the phone, we were trying to do this, but we didn't have these baseline's down, not everybody was on the same page. And so that's why we kind of changed into our focal piece of, um, looking at our reading strategies, taking five reading strategies and really just diving into it. It had already been done, but it had been done, um, maybe not with fidelity across the board. And so they wanted a chance, they were willing to go through this with me one more time, so then I could also understand it, because the, the strategies were very, very useful, and, and you're going to see why I'm telling you that, um, and my hope is that we'll see continued, continued pieces of it. We wanted to tie it back though, because one of the areas that I really started to see was that our students with disabilities, there was a huge gap between, we really wanted to try to close that gap, um, and it, we needed to take the time to use those strategies, to teach those strategies, so that students felt good using them, and also where to apply them, like, so there's a way to do a strategy, but if you don't know when to apply it, it's great to run, you know, run around, hey, I can do the, I can do framing, I can do close reading, but you know when to apply it, and that's what I think our teachers did a really nice job of doing, especially at our middle school level, um, and you're going to see the exact reasons why in a, in a second. If you go down into, if you're, if you're looking from the school improvement plan, you really did want to focus on that ELA, honestly, everything is centered around reading, in, whether it's in math, whether it's in science, whether it's in social studies, whether it's in second, SCS, doesn't matter, there's, reading is a big, is your, is everything, it's your first layer and it just keeps building. So, that was our pull at this point. Our students weren't always excited about that, but, but once we started to kind of see this, once they started to understand the whys, I think it became a lot more palpable, that's how I'll put that for them. So what we tried to do is take the idea, and we used a lot of, we used some, some catchwords, and I think I didn't do as well of a job as I wanted to, when I was discussing like universal design for learning. Universal design for learning really should capture every single one of our kids, and at times, I felt that it was, it was captured, but maybe it was, there's supposed to be shifts within that, that design, and I don't know if all the shifts occurred, but we were doing the right things with the strategies, so it's, it's kind of like, well, there's a give and take in that, in that piece. So, as we continued on to that, we, we really wanted students to be engaged and want to do this, um, and to understand, they're going to be able to apply this in not just in LA class, but they could walk into the math class, see that reading problem and recognize, I have no idea what that was asking me, but if I try the frame method, or I try the block method, that thing's going to break down for me and I'm going to get there, right? And that's what the goal was behind us. All right, so then, as you kept going through, what we started to see is, we're like, all right, we've got to figure out a way, how are we going to see if this really works, right? So we knew our students took pre-ACT in the fall, and they also took it in the spring. We also knew the ACT we give in the fall, which I'm so excited we did that, I would have never been in a school that got to do that, but I will tell you right now, the data pool in that is, gives you so much information, um, from Art for Our Kids, so I'm so thankful that Dale was willing to kind of be like, yeah, we'll do it again, I'm like, great, we're going to keep that going, so that was perfect. We also, the only, the only kind of jump on this, was like our sixth and seventh graders will do our iReady in the fall, the winter and the spring, but our eighth graders, because we test them so much in the spring, we only did a pre-ACT in the fall. And because of that, the data that we have to say whether or not there was huge growth or not, we don't have the exact data, because now I'm going to try and compare it to Ford, but it's a pre-ACT data to start, so it's a little bit, it might be like a green apple and a red apple, I don't know how to, like, it just a little bit different, the taste will be a little bit different once we get there. But I'll talk a little bit about our eighth grade group anyway in a second, because they're a little bit of an anomaly, um, so when you look at data, it's. So when you look at data, it's, I think, my hope is that we get the forwarding, all the forward information, you're gonna see that there's some good stuff there. So, all right, so I kind of jumped together with, I have a class of 2029 listed there, but technically that's really only showing 2020, 2030 and 2031, which are sixth and seventh graders. So we were looking for their targeted growth, but within the special education, students with disabilities. All right, I will tell you right now, we reached more than our goal because there was growth with over 238% and over 182%. Okay, so how do you do that? How do you get that higher percentage? Well, either we didn't, we had like a blank spot in the winter timeframe, but then we jumped really high in the spring. Or really, our students started to apply the information. My gut feel is our students recognized that, oh my goodness, this, by doing these strategies in here, I can really answer these questions really easily. It's not as hard as I thought it was. But it took a lot to be able to give them the opportunity to do that. It didn't happen in the fall, it really didn't happen in the winter, but it happened in the spring. Sixth and seventh grade were probably my, the best two areas where you saw that really used and the applicable pieces of it. The I-ready does give us the chance to see that. So from the sixth and seventh graders, they really did well for that. Now, if you go to the stretch growth for like, hey, we were really trying to push you up and above to that next level, our seventh graders knocked it out of the park. And our sixth graders also did, if you look back to where they started. So it's when numbers are great, but we had to see that whole entire picture. Seventh grade this year really just took whatever they were getting given and used it and applied it within. And usually in seventh grade, well, we have to think about a couple of things that changed for us. We had a new math piece with it, so we were able to use even those reading strategies in the math class. We also had new math teachers, I'm sorry, new reading teachers, I apologize. And so again, just different perspectives, different looks for our kids. And again, smaller group sizes as well. I will tell you, we did have smaller sizes in our seventh grade classroom because we split them out to three sections. And I think that also may have helped us a little bit with that. When you get to our class of 20 and 30, this, this distribution one that I have on here, not, it doesn't make it look as good as what you just saw before, but there's still some really good positive aspects of, if you read it, you have to reread it in a reverse way. All right, I know that doesn't make sense, but it, the, the numbers here represent there is growth and our students did what we wanted them to do. We did close the gap in our sixth and seventh grade, for sure. Our numbers are maybe a little bit, are a little bit smaller with students with disabilities, but we are also able to give that extra target support. So hopefully that is something that is useful. Again, if you reverse the way that that's reading, that distribution aspect, that's really what you should be focusing on.
Liz?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is that, is this page nine? Or is this?
This is page nine, slide nine, sorry, sorry.
Is this for all students?
Yes, this is all of this whole entire class. Yep, so this keeps everybody together. I didn't extrapolate out just that one. That's why, I wanted to make sure I showed you this because it doesn't make it look like things are going the way we want them to go, but when you pull everything out, it really does. So, which is what we wanted. Okay, class of 2029, I kind of talked to you a little bit about them. They are definitely an anomaly. About, just about 87% or 86% of our students are already advanced or, oh, I'm sorry, at this point, going in. And that was in our pre-ACT, pre-ACT data in the fall. So I'm really intrigued to see what our forward scores look like. Does it tell us that same story? Even if, and obviously with a smaller group, you're able to identify. One of the things I really, really appreciated about this, our SLT team did, is they used their PLC time to target which ones of the students were the ones that maybe didn't have that, didn't reach the target or, and were not advanced. And so I'm intrigued to see how the forward test comes out, to see what they did a little bit differently with a few more of the pushes for the reading strategies within. That kind of takes me into why we are doing something called an academic lab next year for sixth, seventh and eighth graders. Because we're going to tier out some situations so that we can use all the strategies with all of the students on a regular basis. And show them applicable ways within, not just in a classroom setting, but also with some testing too, to show them where they can use it within the testing samples and things like that. With the hope that the students will, you know, feel good walking in. But I'm gonna get to why that's so important, starting that at this age and where, how Sarah had said it too. It's extremely, extremely important because the juniors are gonna tell us the story. And I'll tell you that story about them in a second. I will share that our, our 2028, which is our freshman, and our 2027, we honestly took steps back in the spring testing. I was trying to figure out, okay, was it different, different days? Was, did we have a lot of things going on? Were there a lot of distractions within? You know, did we not recognize what needed to be really pushed? And maybe we pushed things differently? I don't know. I haven't, I want to see some of these other test scores that are gonna come our way to understand a little bit more. Because that, the data does show that we worked backwards in the spring for our freshmen as well as our sophomores. Which surprised me, knowing what was going on in their LA classes, knowing what was going on in their math classes. That just surprised me. But at the same time, these are their first samples of going into this type of testing. And when these first times come through, you gotta learn how to take these tests that are gonna show this stuff. And that's why these strategies are just so important. So a kid walks in and says, I got this. Doesn't matter what's being given on that plate.
These slides are the second set of bars with the like, is that a subset of students?
Yes, yep, yes. So that's why that, that's, yes, that's why, that's why it's concerning to me.
So that subset of students is the students in fall that were flagged as of concern?
And then in the spring, look what happened.
So, yeah.
Oh.
Oh, great, I'm sorry, she has to get close to you.
Yep, you are 100% correct, Isaiah. That is exactly why we're looking at with our reading interventionist, which she really kind of pulled all of this apart. And you are correct, you've got to hit this a little bit differently with some of our students and I don't think that's what we did. So we can keep pushing a strategy, keep pushing a strategy, but if we don't have an intervention to use a strategy, because you're, you're just gonna continue to hit this barrier. So you are right on that.
Could you reiterate what he said?
So what he was talking about is that we have these strategies, which are terrific, but if we don't have a full understanding of the strategies or being able to show these students not only just how to use them, but to use them in an interventionist area or an intervention way, you kind of end up banging into each other a lot. So that's why Ms. Moser is one of our.
Hold on, Isaiah, I'm sorry, Isaiah.
We can't hear you, so just a second.
I'm trying to figure out if we can get a microphone.
We can do it on the microphone, because I just don't remember having it.
Could you hear me? Can you yell into the computer, Isaiah?
Yes.
He's explaining to you what an interventionist does.
Ciphering.
As a strategy, it's actually a strategy versus what an interventionist uses to intervene, to help.
That's what that is.
Not getting the strategy.
Correct. Correct, the strategy will support that learning, you are correct. Yep, yep, absolutely. Yeah, and I think sometimes though, if we don't have a basis of that reading, putting strategies in front aren't going to move us where we need to be moved. Does that make sense?
100%, 100%.
Okay.
And who, who on staff do we have on our interventionist team?
Right now, Andrew Moser is our person who does, has taken on all of our, pretty much all of our reading.
District wide?
Uh, no, just sixth, 12th.
Okay, sixth, 12th. So then we have separated.
Yes, yep, so right now. Yeah, so again, ninth and 10th grade, probably a little bit more than we want to look at and just kind of dive in a little deeper to that. I, we definitely, we recognize that right off the bat for this, at least this subset of what we're looking at. Then you're gonna go to our juniors. All right, and if you look at our juniors, yeah, this junior class from the fall to the spring, they, I will tell you, one of the best parts about walking into the testing was, again, this is a snapshot in time, but it's really important to understand that when they walked in, in, I think it was in September, right before, right before homecoming, they took the first test. And then after we got this data, we sat all the juniors down in the room and we talked about the test. We talked about every single piece of the test so that they could understand what everything was being looked at. From that then, use our PLC time to try to really drive in the strat, again, the strategies that I said, to use within and how to apply them to the certain questions. So if there was questions about these, this one set within, let's say, within the English section on the ACT, we show them what strategies are potentially, what strategies are the best strategies to use on those questions. So the students then came in the day of the ACT in the spring and walked in and were like, I feel pretty good. I'm like, they're like, I can walk out of here and I can be ding ding ding. And their test scores showed it. Their test scores really did show it. We had over 80% of our students score higher in the spring than they did in the fall. And that was, whether it was in math, whether it was in English, they really did, they did very, very well, which was fun to hear. What was really great to hear is when they started talking about how they broke down the questions. That was very interesting to hear juniors in high schools talking about those things. But again, it's all about having the experience and being exposed to it. And it's, like I said, that was gonna be another piece of this puzzle. So when you look at the broad spectrum, we gotta catch this middle group, all right? It's been, it was like a valley. We were up here and then we had this valley drop. And I want to find out why that valley drop was. And I don't have that answer right now. But we will be looking at it as a team and trying to figure this out and see what our next steps are for next year. Based on this, we thought we were gonna be coming forward with, again, similar, and I followed where, we kind of followed that same line. So you can see where that K-12, that we're looking at these things together, we're gonna shift a little bit how our PLC time was used, really kind of drive the specific Wednesdays and timing in that. And hopefully that's gonna help us try to identify and maybe do a few more action steps with our students as to where, what we did not do, where, how our freshmen and our sophomores performed. The other thing that I think, and I think you said it, Barbara, was about sharing the information. I don't think I was as transparent with the information. And I think I can do that a lot more. Transparent staff, sure, they all saw it. I mean, that wasn't anything, there was nothing hiding there, we talked about it. But I don't think I did enough for the families and the students, except for that junior class. That's the junior class we sat down in here and went through it all. What would have happened if we did that with freshmen? I mean, they may not have loved it, but then we would have done it. And it might have still just done a little bit to try to get that piece going. Just some things to know, I think our juniors also recognized we did some scholarship stuff beforehand too. We talked a lot about how performance on this test could make a difference, whether you were going into a youth app, going into an adult apprenticeship, and we tied it to something. So again, I think just driving that with our students, I think will be really, really important, moving forward. So in August, when we do get back together as a full unit with SLT, our hope is if they went home today, I didn't give them any homework over the summer, but I kind of did, just saying, I need to bring, rolling through this because this was definitely something that I was looking at behind the 10th graders. I really want to try to understand why behind that path that we had. So that's, sorry, Isaiah. Sixth, seventh and eighth graders. Yep, you are, you are catching my drift.
So I think academic labs going into freshmen's or above the middle school.
No, I think we're gonna start peeling out some interventions, similar to right now we do our math labs. And again, that has shown huge success for our students. But I think the other side of that, and that's an intervention, all right? Because that's, that's working through and relearning and understanding where our students are. I think that intervention aspect for that freshman and that sophomore class, we have to figure out what those would look like and how to incorporate them. As we look at data, we were probably a little bit later looking at that data to see when, before we started all our scheduling. But this is what, we're gonna work through it and figure it out. Correct, yes, yes, I see where you're going with that, yes, yes. Yep, yep, no, yep, you are 100% correct on that. Yep, yeah, so he was asking about, could you hear him? Yeah. Okay, okay. Yep, no, and great questions too, because it's talking about intervention. So what this tells me, when you look at those, when you, when you go to our 2020, our 2027s, all right? We need an intervention somewhere. Something's not, something didn't go well. So what didn't go well, I need to put something in with our staff and our SLT group really kind of figuring out, okay, how do we do this? Is this something that we have to shift? It's gonna be a mindset, that mindset shift.
I was just gonna say, I'll put a shameless plug in again for the parents because I feel like, you know, in terms of comparing the Stanford standards now to what we had, and again, being a parent's like, Alexa, help me! Not quite understanding the way they teach things nowadays. It's like some of these methods, like the Bach method or Cornell notes or something, like just having things available for our parents to say, hey, this, these are some of the strategies we're working on with your kids, here's how you at home can help them in reading a problem or something, I think could be huge. Because I think there are a lot of people that are willing to maybe cross that bridge. But again, if you're, I'm certainly not gonna step in and give advice not knowing how, how they're teaching things. So I think that could be something of value, just to put out some of the strategies that we're looking at schoolwide and to give parents a platform to say, hey, if you want to know more, read up on, you know, maybe some of the things of, that could be helpful.
For the ones that say, hey, older sibling, I have no idea, help them with that. Especially with math, and be like, oh, no. And it's all critical linking, it's all critical linking, right? So it's, and sometimes what, the thing we don't want to do is turn them off of it. Because if we do that, it's gonna be a lot harder to, to show them, hey, you're growing, but it's, it's really, it's a very boundless boat, it really is for this. Because students saw this, right? And they're like, Ms. Rye, I thought I did really, really well. And all of a sudden, we're handing them this back that it didn't show like that growth happened. And that doesn't feel good either to them, so okay, let's work together, we're gonna figure out how to do this. You know, and maybe it was the day. Remember, it's a snapshot in time. It's two hours and 30 minutes of their life.
So what, no, I have a question, Isaiah. Hold on, Isaiah. So when you look like, obviously, these are snapshots, do you ever correlate them with their academic achievement in the classroom? And say, maybe this class just didn't get their, their math scores or, you know, math grades in general were on the lower end? And then correlate it with the achievements with the test or?
Yes, that's a great question, because that's what we talked about this morning as well, was we, so our, our freshman and sophomore grades in the, in the winter dropped tremendously. They dropped between November and February, picked back up in March, but there was a big drop in their grades, quarter grades. And that was interesting. So the students did really well that first quarter. And this isn't every student, but just, you know, if you, yeah. It shows like, the first quarter was good, second quarter was dropped, but their first quarter was high enough that their semester grade still was pretty good. Second semester, they started off kind of in a little bit of a lull and I got, you know, brought back up in May. So their semester grade still ended up okay. And that's what goes on your transcript, right? So now how do you continue to feed that all of this is important? And if somebody has that, I'm sorry. Mom, that's the season. Do you know that we're in February? It's a long fall season.
But it was interesting to see that in the, in the freshmen and the sophomores. Honestly, I'm not gonna lie, some of our juniors area where that happened too, but they were able to pull that out. I'm just curious, like, if it's certain curriculum that, or certain times of year?
Yeah, it's that winter lull. You know, everybody falls into that winter lull, you never know.
Yep.
So yellow on these graphs means that students grew?
Just that, Isaiah.
Sorry, Isaiah. Dylan, Dylan's asking, go for it, sorry, Dylan.
Yellow on this meant they grew but under expectations? Or that their achievement was under expectation?
In the class of 2026, who are you looking at?
All of the different ones. What does yellow mean on it?
All right, so when you're looking at the yellow, that is our students that are in the, approaching the target or approaching the, what our expectation score would have been at that age, at that time.
For achievement?
For achievement.
Okay, so. Okay, so red is underneath achievement.
Yeah, it's under the expected achievement score for that grade at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Before I forget my other thing, I wanted to say, this, these graphs are my favorite to look at. I don't remember all the test names, so when you like tap them, could you have the slides come like with the title? Class twenty six, eye ready or forward, just so that, you know, my head, I'm not like twisting the wires together.
Okay, yes, I can do that for sure.
My big question, Isaiah, and then I'm done, is how do you, you have all come in and done a lot of work to bring the idea of next steps in, after high school, I think in a big way, with the career fair, with a lot of career planning, and I think that's what's been really exciting for this new administrative team working together in the way it is. How do you connect, we're, we're trying to strategize for these reading tests to that part of your work that you do here? Like, what's the, what's the pitch that you tell the students so that they buy in? Because to me, sometimes when you're hearing about these reading exams and everything, and we're, we're teaching to get to understanding the test, it's like, well, okay, but what's, what's the educational value with that? So what's the pitch that you tell the students?
Great question. So I think one of the things that we, that reading we use a lot is, I can probably talk more about what we did with our juniors. And again, we did tie a lot to that careers and to what they wanted to do next. And if, we honestly gave quantitative measurements right off the bat. Like we said, hey, if you want to be doing an adult apprenticeship, this is where you need to score in your reading. If you would like to do this and have be available for different types of scholarships, this is where you have to score in your reading. So we gave really kind of some fine tuned numbers, but then also showed them how to get there. And I mean, even, it's not, it is not normal to grow five points in a reading score on your ACT. That's not normal. But our kids did it, and we had one grow nine. Yeah, so I, I mean, now I might've asked, were you awake the first day? But they, but we, our kids did it, alright, and so that's huge. Now, now what I have to do is try to figure out, okay, how do you keep freshmen, sophomores, eighth graders understanding that throughout? Because really, the, the, the end product is that junior year of that score, right? But all of these are really important because this is showing us how do we now adjust our teaching so that we can make sure you're hitting these target growth areas, this target growth. So it's, it is a, it is a, it's a game that you have to figure out. And really, some of it is finding out what our kids really like and getting to know them and using that to help them understand why this is so important. So hopefully we'll continue and get there.
Okay, I'll relay.
Okay, Isaiah, go ahead. Could you hear what he said?
He just said to thank Liz and, and the admin for going in depth and giving details because historically, it's maybe been a more generalized, short version. And just, it shows that, the depth of work that they're willing to go through for our students. And we appreciate as a board to having some transparency into that. And we find it fascinating, as oftentimes, it's like, woo, that's why we have professionals here.
Right? We've got good kids, we have kids that want to do well as well. So, you know, we don't have students running around our halls during class time. They wanna be in the room, they want to be learning, our teachers are engaging. So now how do we show them how all of that work they're doing is going to benefit them for what they wanna do?
Really important stuff. Any other questions? Alright, thanks so much.
Well, thank you.
Look forward to what comes next, but thank you all. Alright, moving on. Alex, our meetings aren't usually. This is your initiation.
I'm used to long board meetings.
They usually aren't this long.
Five point two, do I have a motion to approve the human growth and development curriculum?
So.
Second. Alright, so attached is the working draft, so the board can see the proposed changes. Some notable names on this committee, and we thank them for their work on this. Mary Beth, thank you for the one. Was Matt on it this year? Was Matt?
No.
No, not this year, okay. Right, any questions on that?
I just had a concern on one part that I relayed, but I just wanted to talk about it. With page seven, where it's talking about sexually transmitted infections, there was a change in the language, which, just wondering if we could make it less, not punitive, but that it's, it's crazy if somebody catches an STI. I felt the change, reading from the older draft to the newer draft emphasized how rare it is for young people to catch STIs, which I think is, of course, probably true and fair to mention. But I felt the language change made it seem that students that do catch STIs are somehow weird and different and therefore less than, and that was my reading of it.
You said page seven?
It's seven, uh, yeah.
Where, what, which, right here is.
Yeah, in groups to different committees, that was part of the conversation, and actually, that language, we're trying to clarify that piece. And so I'm, you know, you do. Helping which part of that, the new language, anything that we made changes, somebody needed clarification. And so we looked, obviously, we read through it line by line, and any changes that we made, usually it was something just like Dylan, how you brought up, hey, you know, this, this verbiage sounds like this, is this what the intent is? So.
So what, I think this is the, the phrase that tripped me up. It said, young people should be reassured that they rarely get STIs and do not need to worry about regular activities such as sports, social interactions with others who may have STIs. So I get how that second part of the phrase is saying you don't need to worry about like treating them with stigma. But I felt the first part of it, oh, it's so rare, but yet it happened to me, what did I do wrong personally? Is how I read it. So I just wanted to bring it up. If, if you felt the committees did discuss it, then I'm not asking to go back.
You see the old language there? And that was, we didn't like the old language, we liked the old language better?
I felt that there was a change in some of the words that were removed from the old language. But I can't remember what I thought on Friday night now. I mean, I think that, except rarely get it, in a way, that just seemed less emphatic that it's rare, it's rare, you know, and if you have it. So I just wanted to bring it up, but if, again, the committees talked about it and this was agreed upon, then.
I read this as if someone does get it, it's not, just to reassure everybody else, it's not something that's easily trans.
Right.
That's the way I read it personally, but that's just the way I took it, so I didn't take it the way you did.
Sure.
But I understand where you're coming from, but that's just the way, when I read through it, it was more about making sure people knew that this wasn't something that, if I got close to you, I was gonna get.
Sure.
That's what I, that's the way I took it.
And I understand that, and I know that this is not what's going to be taught in the classroom, this is the plan for it. What I was concerned about is a student leaving our education classes with a sense that it's, you know, it's rare and you might feel weird if you have it, and so I'm not going to talk to an adult if I catch one, or if I, you know, have concerns about it. And then if that's the case, a student not feeling open to talk with the nurse, or open to talking to an adult with it. But it's probably more the delivery by the teacher than anything, so.
Yeah, I think that's probably, I think a lot of this is gonna be how the teacher delivers it. In terms of a lot of these different topics, is kinda how the teacher delivers most of this. Yeah, these are always topics that, kinda how you read it, is kinda how you perceive it.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately. Like you said, I think, like, as everything, as everybody kinda went through this, I'm sure everybody kinda had their own perception on how you read it. And, and obviously, I couldn't even imagine having to try to figure out how to make the changes, to try to figure out, you know, how the verbiage would be so that it, you know, cause you kinda have to think of it like what a young person, like a child reads this versus a, you know, a middle aged person versus an elderly person versus, you know, somebody else trying to read this. So yeah, it's, it's kinda hard to figure out, you know, what's the best verbiage to put in there. So it definitely is better than the first version that was in there.
Yeah, and if, if you all, I just wouldn't want it to seem that the curriculum is making it seem like.
In this section is how the, the staff member would respond if a student had a question about a STI. This is, you know, this is how we wanna respond, just simply define it as a serious infection. Rarely do young people get infections. It's, it's really guidance for our staff on how to respond to these questions. And then typically, they always finish up with, you know, that'd be a great question to talk to your parents about.
Sure.
If you're interested at all.
Sure.
But that's, that's, this section is specifically for our staff, how we would respond if a question came up.
Which certainly is more amplified than the initial language. I feel like a more, a more profound and professional than it was originally stated. But I get, I mean, even working with the strategic planning, I mean, you could sit there and wordsmith things all day and second guess, and what is this word implic, I mean, what are they?
Oh, we did.
I mean, exactly. To be honest, you're still like, is this perfect? Probably not, but, right? It's more of a conversation and the questions and the back and forth that we put trust in our staff. I'm sure nobody ever wants to have that, you know, conversation, ever wants to, you know, to have to have that, you know, conversation with a young adult or child either, so.
So no major changes to the, to the guidelines, as you can see, you know, we did read words and things, try to clarify a little bit. I think, so any, any, any place where you see where we cross something out and it's reworded, it was just to clarify the intent and how we're trying to reiterate that.
Any other questions? Okay, Mary Beth?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Five point three, do I have a motion to approve the early literacy remediation plan, Act twenty requirement?
So. I'll second.
Any discussion or extra questions on that? Okay, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Six point one, do I have a motion to approve the student fees for twenty five, twenty six?
Salute.
Second. Okay, any questions on that?
We're increasing the meals, right, the cost? I think I tried to send a question, just wondering, is that because the food cost is going up? Or we're trying to keep staff, so we're trying to pay more for the staff from that spot?
I think it's a little bit of all of it. So when DPI came in to do their audit this last year, they looked at kinda what our costs were and they gave us these thresholds and said, here's what we need to be reaching to get. And Brett, you can help me with this too, to be getting some of their funding sources and things like that. So this was their recommendation. I know one of the questions that came up is the staff one, like this is so much larger than the student one. But in essence, we don't, there's probably about five staff members that take, take any sort of hot lunch from us. And so you're not making money, it's not like, oh, we increased that to make more money to pay off certain things. It's just the thresholds that DPI gives us that we have to meet, if that makes sense. It doesn't really make a lot of sense in my head sometimes, Brett and I already talked about this today, but is that?
Yep, I can, do you want me to conduct one?
Sure, yeah, you did sign in after all, so you deserve.
Specifically, the question was, what is gonna be triggering the increase in lunch prices? And we really aren't targeting anything on the expense side. We built the budget about three percent of the increase. One thing I do wanna point out to the board is that food service is stranded toward a deficit budget. And so last year, twenty eight thousand dollars deficit, this year, we're looking at maybe thirty thousand deficit. So this offset would increase the revenue by about twenty eight thousand dollars. So we still maintain deficit after next year's, you know, books close, but we're getting closer. The other side that Sandra is looking at is increasing participation. So it's about fifty percent, and I think a target would probably be closer to sixty percent participation. And so one thing that you will potentially see this year has been a transfer from the general fund into Fund fifty for food service. And that's something we wanna look at closely and try not to have the general fund supporting food service. Any other questions?
And just to make note, we're still considerably lower than other districts too. We haven't raised this in several years, and so, yeah, it's still to make note that we're, you know, still below and under whatever.
Sign is up there.
Oh, okay, oh, yeah, okay, well, let's take a vote on this one. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Six point two. Alright, we have attached here our preliminary budget for review with Brett.
So statutorily, what we're asking is that the board approve a working budget, draft budget, or preliminary budget in this case. And understand that these numbers are preliminary. The idea behind it is we put numbers into the book so we can pay our bills and get the school year rolling. But from here on until after the annual meeting, we have a special meeting, then you will formally adopt a final budget. I know you know all this stuff, it's just the stuff that I need to say. This budget is being built at a deficit, so I wanna make sure that you have that message. The current budget is projected to be positive or surplus. And you will see it coming closer to balance because there will be a Fund forty six transfer in, which you're familiar with as a Fund forty six school district. However, one of the questions that came across was, what are we watching and how could that impact functions? And so the state biennial budget is not passed. What I know of it is that Governor Evers put this on legislation table and they have stalled in terms of their conversations. The big thing of all of the things that the business managers and district administrators are standing behind is the categorical aid for special education. Should it be, it's currently at about thirty percent, and the district gets about six hundred thousand dollars in categorical aid. Should it move to sixty percent, this district will have another six hundred thousand dollars. So this is something to get behind as a school board. That would change our end numbers significantly. So all we're asking tonight goes to approve this preliminary budget.
Any questions?
Yeah, just like when we get to October, do you still expect that seventy thousand to be there? Or is it really all just dependent on that budget?
I, I suspect, and Michelle, you can help me in this one, because I think the, the budget will probably land as it is unless that one change is made in the governor's budget. We have our compensation done, we know what our insurance is, we're pretty much, our expenses are pretty much known. It's just the revenue side. I would imagine that student count will be very stable again, it's about seven hundred and seventy five kiddos. Other things that are aids, there are also that we get like transportation aid and such, will probably be very similar. It's just that special education categorical aid. Michelle, if you have any thoughts on your lens?
No, I agree with all of it. Which is also why when we were at the Capitol, this whole notion that, wow, public schools were reimbursed at the same rate private schools were at ninety percent, and we're getting an extra one point eight million. That referendum amount would look significantly different too, because that's essentially a huge chunk that we need from our taxpayers too. So, yeah, keep on the shameless plug for speculative funding, I love it. Anything else, Brett?
Okay, so you would like a motion on adopting the preliminary budget? Alright, do I have a motion to approve the preliminary budget?
I will accept that motion.
I will second that motion.
Great, and take a vote, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah? Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, and thanks so much for really working on that, Brett. Seven point one, do I have a motion to update our social studies graduation requirements from three point five to three point zero?
Salute. I'll second.
And this was a change that was previously made, that. And this was a change that was previously made, that now after upon further review, not necessary, and we're gonna change it back for better options and opportunities for our kiddos. All right, any questions specifically? Okay, you're in done, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the elementary handbook for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six?
Salute.
I'll second.
It wasn't a time.
She's not at the session, is she?
I got the power of the computer now. I got the power, am I? Any questions on that as we did take a close look?
Can I just add a quick comment?
Yes, you can.
Since the fees just were approved, I will make that adjustment. I know right now they are highlighted in yellow, but I will make that adjustment.
Perfect. Do we need a different motion saying, do I want to make the other change? Will we have to re-approve it?
Sorry.
We were keeping the fee sheet out of there, right?
I can.
Maybe you have. Um, otherwise, I was gonna say we need to bring back the middle school, high school handbook eventually, after some changes later in the summer, so maybe we can bring them back at the same time, maybe if there's something else that comes up within the next couple months.
Do you guys not want the fees in there? Should we just, I could totally just get rid of the fees altogether?
I think what we, I thought when we had talked about whether we were doing the handbook, we were gonna have a separate fee sheet, like a, a random of sorts, so then that didn't have to be.
Sorry.
Yeah, it'd just be the fee sheet every year that we'd approve, but.
Okay, sorry, I will just delete it all together. I apologize. Sorry.
No, that's okay. So I think you could do it, we can bring it, the whole thing back again next time and regardless. Might as well. There could be something else. Yeah, okay. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the middle school, high school handbook for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year?
Salute.
I'll second.
I need to put my, I did not put the, um, the page number in, just in case it were changes. So I will put then, if I can, because I can pass it right now.
So this is something that obviously went through, um, our policy committee and there was, um, some stuff that we might be looking to update and have another policy committee later in the summer. Um, so I would not go through the work right now and wait till, um, both of those handbooks will probably come back on the board agenda in August then for a final approval going into the school year. So for now, we are gonna approve this version. Well, please, we are. Okay, um, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve volume thirty four, number one, policy changes?
Salute.
I'll second.
All right, this is a second read for approval. Questions and comments?
I think, so if you open the document, go to policy, which is on page, I think, six of six, policy eight one two five, consultants. I sent an email letter to all the board, I think on Friday night, um, kinda giving my perspective on this policy. And I think what I'm asking is for us to amend it or table it so we can talk about an amendment to it later, to just have in policy what Michelle's been doing essentially this year.
You just seconded the motion.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about it. So I can't talk about it until we second it. Um, and I'm not asking to table all the policies, I'm just asking to table eight one two five. Um, because right now, the way I understand it is if we approve a budget and within that budget, there's enough money in a line item to hire consultants, that this policy would allow the superintendent to do that without necessarily having it come to the board. And while I don't have any problems with Michelle leading this district and, and having her expertise in that, I think I would get concerned about my ability to talk to the public about what's going on at the school district if I'm not seeing, you know, all the people coming in, because we do get to see, um, the people we hire every single meeting, you know, that are coming in, and this would essentially be the same thing in a lot of ways, consultants who would be doing work for the district. And so it's just, I think we should amend it to have a line in there that says, yes, the district administrator has the authority to sign these consultant contracts, but at the next board meeting in writing, there has to be notice to the board that it was signed. Just so that we're, we're continuing to be aware of who's working for the district and, and Armani's going to outside contractors, um, and this man is doing it, so we go to referenda, people aren't like, wow, look at all those consultants, you know, but yes, we know and they're needed. That's what I think we should do, and I'm wondering what other people think.
Anyone else?
Quiet.
Wow, quiet, okay.
What's up?
I just, have you been listening?
You want me to, I'm listening, like, you want me to reply?
No, you don't have to. I, I think I'll just say that, um, I, I think, you know, giving, giving Michelle autonomy is number one in decision making, and I think just like tonight, um, during her, her board report, when she said, all right, hey, we're looking to have some facilitators help admin team and roll out the PLC work, and we decided to go with Brad, um, and Steve, and the contract was significantly, um, less than the other bids. Um, I, I, I just think it's a slippery slope to put in policy exactly what, what we need to be notified of, because I think you could look at several policies, um, in saying, we expect this in writing, we expect this in writing, we expect her to, and, and there's a level of trust and, and, um, you know, trust and, and a foundation of a relationship built on open communication and transparency, that, that is something that she's gonna tell us above and beyond seeing the payroll and accruals. Um, knowing very well, it went through Brett, and he's gonna say absolutely not, Michelle, and that's not in the budget. And so I'm just trying to navigate what has to be put in policy versus having trust in the administration that they are gonna be fruitful in, in all of, um, that kinda information.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you, and, and I, I just don't wanna project on, on history and maybe distrust in an administration that would not be transparent about that, and, and this could be an open door to hire people that we wouldn't know about. But I'm trying to level with the fact of how we go forward, forward on a path of saying, she's given us no reason to say, Michelle, we need it writing every time you make a decision, um, or, you know, feel like this is a good decision versus this is not.
So how often do you think something like that would come up?
Not that often, that's what I'm thinking. Once a year, twice a year, I mean, this year Damian was an example. It's not very often.
It's that whole notion of, nobody likes to be micromanaged, right? You know, it's, it's that notion of, you know, as a board, we hire somebody who, you know, we put our trust in, so, you know, we have to trust that she's bringing in people that aren't going to do harm to the district. So, I mean, I totally underget, I, that came off, remember that came off, but, I mean, we, we have, you know, I, I totally understand, you know, the, the idea of not knowing, you know, who's in the district, but, you know, obviously that person is, is not going to be, you know, probably not out there dealing with parents and probably not out there with students, there's probably mostly going to be with staff and, and that sort of thing. I mean, I would think that if it's going to be somebody who's going to be, you know, more with, with parents and, and students, it would be on a larger scale to where I think, you know, that would be something that, you know, I think would be more of a, like, you know, like I said, like a larger scale kinda conversation that we would maybe have, I don't know, that's kind of what I can kind of perceive. I don't know, is that kind of what you're, maybe what you're thinking or, or what are you kind of, are you thinking that it's?
Well, I'm just asking, I guess, for consistency then, because, you know, we're involved in hiring of administrators and some other positions in the district, because we don't want it to just be the administration that made the decision, right? We, we are involved because we like to be able to say, the board was also involved in these hybrids, and so we had skin in the game and nothing was hid from us, because we had somebody there, right? And so when something goes wrong, we all kinda lock arms together and it's all of our responsibility. And then this kind of opens up the, that gray space where it's like, well, we, you know, yeah, that was just mentioned in passing, but we were never really told who the consultant was, we were told there's a consultant coming in, and, and so we can offload the responsibility just to Michelle, and, and that doesn't seem team based to me, and I don't think it's a slippery slope to be saying that we're, we're not trusting Michelle's transparency anymore, anybody's transparency anymore, because we're just saying, and we are wanting on the public record for people to go back in and say, these consultants are here and this is where it was mentioned, you had the public, the chance to look at our agenda, and, and so we weren't hiding the fact that these consultants were here, we were happy that they were, they're helping our students, we trust our administration, and we're not trying to obscure anything, it's just out there on the agenda in the report, that's who was hired. Um, in the original reading, and maybe it was, uh, changed from the version that I had saw, seen in the draft from Neola, so that's good, there was also the opportunity for staff members who are at heights already to get consultants with this new, or consulting contracts with these new, uh, authorities, which is, you know, a slippery slope, I also think in some ways, because again, I have no concern of that right now, and I wanna make it that very clear, but I do have a concern of, I don't think it's out of the possibility that that could be misused ten years in the future, and we should have that conversation now instead of a board ten years in the future being like, can't believe that came through. So that's, that's my perspective on it, and if I don't have anybody to go with me on it, that's okay, uh, but I'm just uncomfortable with the way that policy was written, and I think it just brings us out of the process in too much of a way.
So Dylan, I don't presume. Would it be possible to go on this and then people get it in policy, only because I'd like to see what other districts do, or not most, as like a reference point, is there something very similar that they do like this? Is that just like a little bit more research, I mean, on it? So I'm not saying, like, I'm not saying I disagree with people who do this, I mean, this is not everything, but I just would like a little bit more information on what else, who else is doing it like this, what else is it done for, just, I mean, just to have background, you know, we're not overstepping, but we're not underdoing it.
So everybody heard the, did everybody hear the, could you hear Mary Beth? So he pretty much just said, um, if it's something possible that can go through our policy committee, just to do some fur- further research on, um, I will say, Michelle, I don't know if you wanna say anything, because I know, obviously, policy goes through Neola, and we did some double checking with our Neola rep, that it's pretty industry standard verbiage, um, and no other school district really adopts any further authority from the board, um, to overstep on, um, the superintendent's consulting authority in the way that we're maybe we're looking at, but, um, so Isaiah, I've not let Michelle chat, and then we can revisit, okay? Okay. Okay. Yeah, so I reached out to Matt, who's our Neola rep, and so he has various schools too, and I just said, is anyone else questioning? And I put some of the concerns that you had had in there, Dylan, and he said that no one has questioned him yet, that they were, that all his school districts were going with what was written by Neola. That doesn't mean that, you know, there are districts that don't go with Neola, and we can find out if there's other districts and see what their consulting, um, language is, and then revisit it in the policy committee, that's what she wanted to do. Well, and I have no problem if we wanna set a standard in saying that, you know, we would like to, to see some sort of, I, agenda item of saying, hey, we're approving this contract, or, or acknowledging it, or Michelle has some type of letter attached in her report saying, this is informative of what is transparent, but I think this whole notion of setting a board up for ten years from now, the policy, anybody can change it tomorrow or the next day or the next day, right or wrong, right? We can change it, they can change it back tomorrow. So I, I think it's in the now, working with the administration we have and what feels right, and I, I don't disagree with that level of transparency and just keeping them a no, um, I just don't think it specifically needs to go in policies stating exactly needing in writing every time something that, like that happens, I would be more comfortable with a standard of adoption of saying, hey, Michelle, we would like that level of transparency, attach it in your report, so we can give feedback to the public should we be asked. That's just my opinion, everybody else?
I agree with that too, I think I just don't like it in policy as much as I do like, I mean, I do, I think the expectation needs to be there, I think that is very important, I just don't know why, I've gone back and forth on this one, so I'm, but I, yeah, I mean, if Neola's like, nobody's changed it, I think that's a, a good read to start with, and we can always change it.
Isaiah's raising his hand, go ahead, Isaiah. He just wanted to raise his hand. So if you're okay, I think we go ahead with this, and certainly we're, um, obviously going to have a policy committee meeting in August, and so it's certainly something that we can put on there, if something else comes up in the meantime, or if there are other examples that maybe you think of that don't fit in the standard that we're proposing or whatnot, then we can re- revisit that.
I'm okay voting, but I'm not gonna vote, no.
That's, no, that's fine.
That's, that's definitely yours, right?
Yep. All right, we have a motion in your second. Mary Beth?
I'm voting to adopt this, right?
Yes, we are voting to approve it. Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
No.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Seven point five, do I have a motion to approve the Act twenty policy draft attached, and this is our second read on it.
Salute.
I'll second.
Yeah, it's gonna be fast.
So have we had any issues with this policy?
No, well, this is first, it's a, it's brand new policy for our third grade, so it lines up with Act twenty. Did, actually, uh, worked with some other districts, uh, with the curriculum directors, so we shared our policies, Neola was a big help here, and we followed their guidance with it, um, lines up really well, I think, um, we had some teachers look at it as well, so it, it'll work for us, and it, and it meets requirements for Act twenty.
Any questions? Mary Beth? Okay, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, I'll ask for a motion to approve eight point one through, those are only nineteen. Yeah, I think, let's do, um, eight point six, one six, eight sixteen, just 'cause those others might require some.
I will make it that.
Okay, eight point one through eight point one six.
I'll second.
All right, and we are acknowledging the resignation of Cora Galixson, um, also, um, Angie Antist, Shelly Morrow, they're taking some other positions, um, excited to approve the hire of Alex. Hired as our new athletics and activities director, effective July first, but he's already in the building and already getting a jump start, we're really thankful for that, and we welcome you aboard. Um, we also have a hire of Sherry Breton, replacing Bev, who's, um, coming on board to help out.
Yay, Bev.
I know, right? And that's some other great hires helping out.
Another alumni coming back to teach.
I know, that's exciting, love that. And coaches, always important. All right, any further? A lot of them there. Questions, comments? All right, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
And I, I vote yes as well.[1784.32] Do I have a motion to approve the middle school, high school teaching staff overloads for twenty-five, twenty-six?
I'll second.
All right.
I was just waiting, you know, I had to wait till the, you know, the.
Do you have any questions on that one?
No.
Any questions on the overloads? I hear it was some work to get that down, and so that's a nice word. Okay, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah? Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Eight point one eight, do I have a motion to approve co-curricular appointments for twenty-five, twenty-six school year as per the attached list?
Salute.
I'll second.
So some considerable work was done in raising some of these up, and you'll notice some similar numerical values, and so I think that was obviously on purpose to make things better aligned and more consistent. My only feedback is for some of these positions that are new, or maybe there's turnover, be a definite expectation as far as what the role entails. So I think when you're doubling a salary or a stipend position without actually explicitly stating what that advisor role maybe encompasses, or the time commitment, and what, you know, I just don't want us to open ourselves up to something, so I would just challenge some formality to some of the expectations, and maybe some further transparency down the line as far as what you guys decide on those, would be beneficial.
Any questions regarding the work that was done on those?
Yeah, good work.
Okay. All right, Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the fall coaching appointments for twenty-five, twenty-six school year as per the attached list?
Salute.
I'll second.
Thanks to all of our trusty coaching staff. Jim, would you like to come up in front of the crew, being it's your last day?
Just making sure that the two that you approved earlier are the open spots there for the volleyballs. So fills it in with it.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Was that your work?
Yes.
Awesome, great to see. Any questions? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes. Nine point one, do I have a motion to approve an early graduation for January twenty-two six? Any discussion?
I just love that.
Okay, hearing done, Mary Beth? Isaiah? Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve, let's combine, ten point one to ten point four?
Salute, second.
Okay, and we're.
I was going to read them as.
Recognizing donations, a thousand dollars to the Drama Scholarship from John and Dana G. We've got a donation of seven hundred and fifty dollars to elementary students from Luke Fortney, partnered with Soccer Healthcare. We've got a donation in the amount of a thousand dollars in memory of John F. Wick to the Tech Ed Department, and a donation in the amount of six hundred and fifty dollars from Remington's Tavern to the Vanguard Racing Team. All right, thank you all. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Ten point five, we're just acknowledging a donation in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars in the form of gift cards from an anonymous donor, and Kelly Santel has worked hard in distributing those accordingly to some staff members that had a rough quota at the end of the year, and maybe to some families in need, so thank you to that donor. And we're also acknowledging ten point six, the donation in the amount of four hundred dollars from the Association of Nutrition and Food Service Professionals to the Food Service Department, and ten point seven, a donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Archery Club from Glacier Valley Gobblers.
That is turning.
I was just going to say, oh, it's turning, I'm not sure what that is, but hey.
Eleven point one, do I have a motion to approve various FFA field trips, the state conventions, state fair, and officers training?
Salute.
I'll second.
And assuming we'll hear more about those as they come, always to get these approved so they can plan. Any questions? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Isaiah? Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, just some future meeting dates to put out there, we've got our board admin retreat on July eighth at five P M. We are going to do a committee meeting before our July twenty-eighth meeting at five P M to discuss Fund Eighty. So all are welcome to attend. And I believe that committee chair, Ray U. Dillon, is the government, no, community relation.
Government, yes.
Yeah, okay, combined, yes, I believe it all. And then we'll look to doing another policy committee in August, but that is that, any question? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
I'll second.
Oh, I thought it was nine, that's not that bad. Eight, sorry.
It's a long one.
Mary Beth? Isaiah?
These are.
Dylan?
Yeah.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I would say, he's like, he's south girl style.